All right. Thank you, Brian, and welcome everyone to this December 11, 2023, meeting of the Homewood City Council. Before we get to our agenda tonight, we have Ms. McDonald, who is a candidate for probate judge, and she's come to talk to us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me a moment to speak here. I'm a resident of Homewood. I've been a resident. My family have been a resident here since 2019. We live over on the west side of Homewood, off Berry Road, and I've been attorney practicing here in Birmingham for over 10 years, practicing probate law. I'm running for Jefferson County Probate Judge. That election is going to be March 5th. It is a countywide vote. So because we are living in Jefferson County, you are eligible to vote for me. It's very important to understand what we're voting for and who we're voting for for probate judge. A lot of citizens don't know what a probate judge does. Probate Court is the court that touches most citizens' lives, whether we know it or not. It handles your Ds, it handles your mortgage, your mortgage liens. It also handles adoptions, marriage license, estates, probates. Most people know that's what Probate Court is all about, but it encompasses so much more. Also, when the city needs to condemn, condemn property, that starts in Probate Court. So it's very important that we understand what all happens in Probate Court and why we are putting people there and who has the qualifications for that. As I stated, I'm a practicing partner here at a law firm, Cumberland Grant, family of three children. My husband's very active, as well as my children with the rec league, and we've been enjoying our time here in Homewood. I appreciate your time. Thank you again, Yawada McDonald, and that's March 5, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. We're going to start tonight with an invocation from Joyce Cheven of the Jewish Community Relations Council. If you'll come on up, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone will please stand.
So everybody has to stand while I talk?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a few extra minutes here, so. Just thank you so much to Councillor Sims and Mayor McCluskey and the City Council for having me here tonight. Before I start the invocation, I have a few words to say. Joyce Cheven, Director of the Jewish Community Relations Council of the Birmingham Jewish Federation, and for over 60 years, the JCRC has worked to build bridges of understanding to our broader community, combat antisemitism, and advocate for public policy and social justice issues important to our Jewish community. We do this work through outreach and working collaboratively with our faith and civic partners in the community, and we educate others to our history, our culture, our traditions, and we not only like to share our beliefs, but in turn, learn about others. For only by truly knowing each other can we work to develop paths forward together. So I'm most honored to be with you tonight, as we just lit the lights of the menorah together in Homewood to celebrate the holiday of Hanukkah. The Hanukkah story is one of strength and resilience that resonates soundly today. Hanukkah is a holiday celebrating oppression, excuse me, not celebrating oppression, overcoming oppression, resisting assimilation, and maintaining our Jewish identity against all odds. It is one of many stories in our history of Jewish survival. So our Jewish community feels today as if we are once again in a battle for our survival. Antisemitism is everywhere in our streets and on our campuses. Hate crimes against Jews have risen 37% since last year, and in a survey done in 2022 before the October 7th attacks by Hamas, one out of every four Jews reported feeling unsafe and avoided publicly wearing or displaying things that might identify them as Jewish. The atrocities committed by Hamas on October 7th are a continuation of the world's oldest hatred. The war has raised the fears of our community and has also put others at risk. The tragic and hate-fueled murder of a six-year-old Palestinian Muslim boy in Illinois, and the attempted murder of three Palestinian students last month in Vermont show the need
Andrus.
Here.
to work together to counter antisemitism, racism, Islamophobia, and all forms of hate
Harden.
Here.
President Wyatt.
Here.
All right. We got everybody tonight. All right. Next, we have the reading of the
as we are doing here tonight in Homewood. I thank you for your willingness to help dispel
minutes from our council meeting of November 27, 2023. Those have previously been distributed.
the darkness we are feeling by spreading the light tonight. In closing, I want to
I entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for
offer this prayer of peace. God of all, protector and redeemer, source and shelter for all
approval of the same.
Motion.
For a second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Wolverton, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
faiths, grant safety and security to all nations, so that harmony and blessings resound from
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved 11 to 0. We don't have any board vacancies tonight,
the four corners of the earth. Blessed are you, God of all, forging nations and peoples
nor do we have any additions to the agenda, so.
Actually, I'm sorry. I should have, I forgot.
That's okay.
in the crucible of change throughout history. May this time of challenge for the nations
So Michael Murray completed his service to the Park Board on, at our last meeting
of the Middle East become a blessing for all inhabitants and for the world. May the
in December.
Yep.
And he is an at-large representative of the Park Board, and Berkeley asked me to
light of the Hanukkah menorah shine a lighted path toward peace for all nations and all
go ahead and open his spot, if we could.
peoples. Amen.
Okay. Do you, how long do you?
Thank you.
We can do it after Christmas. We can leave it open until that first meeting in January.
January, so January 8.
Allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which
Eight, is that right? Yeah.
Is that his second term?
Yeah, yes. Yes, he has done 12 years. He is all finished. Yeah.
it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Got it. All right. So that is, we will open that at-large position until January 8 at 4:30.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cheven. We appreciate it. All right, Mr. Secret, if you will, please All right. Thank you. All right. So since there are no other additions, no additions call roll.
Yes, sir. Councillor Gualtin, here.
to the agenda, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the agenda.
Gear.
Here.
Alamon.
So moved.
Here.
Second.
Wolverton.
Motion by Ms. Nelm, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Aye.
Jones.
Any opposed? Those are approved 11 to 0, which brings us to the consent agenda.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
I entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Nelm.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtin, second by Ms. Gear. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also approved 11 to 0, which brings us to our old business agenda. First item, 021123, request to authorize the mayor to sign flock camera renewal with the addition of several new cameras, brought to us by Chief Ross and J.J. Bishop. And we will start with a, well, I think this was previously reported from Finance, but I don't know if you want to, if you can repeat it.
Yeah, and this was from the Finance Committee meeting on November 13. Voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of a three-year agreement for the additional cameras.
All right. So we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 23179. Next item, 031023, bid opening held on November 6, 2023 at 4:31 PM for communication services, brought to us by Councillor Smith, and another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, Your Mr. President, the Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right. So we have another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 23180. Next item, 071123, public hearing set for tonight for permission to vacate Drake Street and adjacent alley right-of-way for Piggly Wiggly Development, brought to us by McConnell, White, and Terry Realty, and Cale Smith. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith.
Yes, we heard this issue in our meeting on November 13 and voted 4 to 0 to refer this item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Councillor Sims and seconded by Councillor Alamon.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. See Mr. Legg there?
Yeah, I'm Murda Legg, representing McConnell, White, and Terry, and this is Mark Clark with Shell Engineering. And we're just here to ask for your final approval on the vacation of Drake Street. And it's something, you know, that has been, been in our agreement, and in our agreement since we very first came, you know, came before you guys. So like that, we just ask, ask if you have a positive opinion.
Got it. So this, this is, just so everyone remembers, this, this was included in the incentive agreement, so this is really just sort of the formality of going through with the vacation. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not, then I will close the public hearing, ask if there are any questions or comments from council. And if not, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. That's a motion to approve for Mr. Gualtin, a second, is that Ms. Smith? From Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 23181. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. All right. Next item, 101123, request for permission to block a portion of the right-of-way during repairs to building facade at 2823 18th Street South, brought to us by Leslie Canner of Disc Real Estate and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Public Works. Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, on, let's see, I guess it was last, last Monday, we met, and the committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval pending the proper indemnification agreement, which was, the motion was made by Councillor Harden, seconded by Councillor Gear. And that, just to clarify, this was going to kind of be under the oversight of the Engineering Department, so.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 23182. Next item, 121123, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a sign variance at 3430 Independence Drive, brought to us by Lynn Everts of Amata Senior Care and Wyatt Pugh. And we will start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith.
Yes, we heard from the folks from Amata, and the committee voted 5 to 0 to refer this item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. The motion was made by Councillor Sims and seconded by Councillor Gear.
All right. Thank you. I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and I think we have a representative here. If you will, just tell us what the sign is.
So we are Amata Senior Care. We've been in business in Mestavia for about eight years, and we're moving our agency to Homewood. We're residents of Homewood. So essentially, if you look at the sort of top right there, what we found out whenever we purchased the building is that our entire front parking lot is pretty much a right-of-way for Aldot. So under normal circumstances, we would have a single monument that was double-sided that was on our property that you could see from both directions. But considering the hardship, we're asking the council to approve for one additional monument sign, so that we can put one facing north, one facing south, that are really close to the building.
All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not, then I'll close the public hearing, ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I would just like to remind everybody we heard from them last, last week, and their building is off of 31 and right next to a large ravine. So these signs really will be able to attract the traffic either direction, just because they're so far off the street. And that is not an accurate representation of how tall the sign is going to be. It's not going to be taller than the building.
The rendering is not really accurate. Yeah, Wyatt will attest. It'll be within the closure.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Not, I would entertain a motion.
I'm sorry. I'd make a motion to approve.
All right. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 23183. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, 131123, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a sign variance for Hero Donuts at 1726 28th Avenue South, brought to us by the Pahakas Restaurant Group and Don Haas of Sinage and Wyatt Pugh. I'm going to turn it over to Special Issues here in just a second, but my understanding is this one we need to carry over. Is that right? Correct. Okay. So I'll get the report from Special Issues first.
Okay. So we met last week, heard from Don Haas, and voted 4 to 0 to send this item out tonight to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing, and motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Councillor Gear. So that's it.
All right. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and then we will carry this item over until next week? Are y'all going to be ready next week?
Yeah, when do you think y'all have the drawing?
Oh, next week?
Next week is our, next week is our next meeting.
I'll make sure they have it next week, yeah. I thought it was next month, but yeah, we can do it next week, sure.
No, we'll have a meeting next week, so, next Monday night. So if you've got it ready, we'll, we'll.
Sure, I'll tell them to have it ready.
Okay. If not, then you got to wait till January. But yeah, our next meeting is next Monday.
Gotcha. All right.
Yeah. Mr. Jones.
Could you go ahead and take out of order 1511, so they don't have to keep walking up?
I, I can. I'm just going to point out one quick thing before that happens. And this is not directed at you. As y'all know, I did these differently than the way we started to do them, where we set the public hearing after it gets through committee. This is why. So we'll go back to that way. This was just because of the holidays and the way meetings fell. We were trying not to inconvenience anyone, any, but we, if anyone's wondering why we do it, this is why. So, okay. All right. So that item, that public hearing is carried over to next week. All right. We'll take the next item out of order, 151123, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a sign variance for Luca Restaurant and Market at 1722 28th Avenue South, brought to us by the Pahakas Restaurant Group, Don Haas and Wyatt Pugh. And another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, we heard from Mr. Haas on this issue as well, and voted 5 to 0 to refer this item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Councillor Sims.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, I will open the public hearing, and Mr. Haas, if you'll just tell us about this one.
All right. So this sign package includes a projecting sign and proposed two attached wall painted signs and an alcove sign. So this is Luca Restaurant, which is going to share a courtyard with Hero Restaurant on 28th Avenue. So they are asking for an additional wall sign and also the alcove sign that you see there on the bottom left-hand side.
All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I will close the public hearing, ask if there are any questions from, or comments from council.
Mr. Haas, can you remind us, because I remember the, the alcove sign is very small, correct?
Yes, ma'am. One square foot.
One square foot. And then, I can't remember the other sign. Oh, that, yes. Okay. And I can't remember, was it a size thing, or was it just the fact that it was an additional sign?
Just the fact that it's an additional wall sign, yes.
Additional sign. Okay. Got it.
And one other variance, that projecting sign has copy on it that's about an inch and three quarters too.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, that's right. I remember that, too.
But the blade, but the blade itself is fine. The blade itself is not the variance, it's the size of the text on the blade.
Right.
It's an inch and three quarters too big. Yeah.
I have a question. Isn't there a draw, isn't there a painting on the other side of it?
A mural.
A mural. And so we consider that a mural, not a sign?
But it doesn't have any, it doesn't have any advertising.
Right. Okay. It looks good. I just, okay.
Mr. Sims.
I just have a question for clarification to you. I think when we were looking at the wall signs last Monday, one actually said Luca was clearly just the restaurant, and I believe the other was the market and restaurant. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's, that's the way you plan to do it? One restaurant, one market and restaurant?
Yes, sir. If you look at the, the text on the left-hand side, right there, yeah, it's, it's different for the market opposed to the restaurant.
Okay. I was just wanting to clarify that, because I know we had some discussion about, are there two tenants, so on and so forth. So this cleans up all of that, because you're getting the variance for the additional sign, which has both, essentially. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Can I make a motion to approve?
You can.
And I will second that.
All right. So we have a motion from Ms. Andrus and a second from Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 23184. All right. Thank you very much.
You're also doing Slice, right?
Oh, yeah.
He's also doing Slice. It's the next item.
Oh, I forgot, yeah.
That's okay. Yeah.
We can't get rid of him.
So we'll do, we'll do this one out of order as well. 161123, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of sign variances for sliced pizza at 1010 Oxmore Road, brought to us by J.J. Thomas, Candace Watson, and Wyatt Pugh. And another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, met last week and heard from Mr. Haas and the owner of the restaurant, J.J. Thomas. The committee voted 5 to 0 to refer this item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. The motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Ms. Andrus.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this one. And Mr. Haas, if you'll tell us about this one.
Okay. This variance pertains to the, to the projecting sign for this particular restaurant. The sign is a little bit bigger than what the ordinance allows, and the, the main part is, the, the text is bigger. It's allowed eight inches, and that is 22 and a quarter inches, but the sign does fall in line with similar businesses in that Edgewood area.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I'll close the public hearing, ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion from Ms. Smith and a second from Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 23184. All right. Thank you very much.
You're also doing Slice, right?
Oh, yeah.
He's also doing Slice. It's the next item.
Oh, I forgot, yeah.
That's okay. Yeah.
We can't get rid of him.
So we'll do, we'll do this one out of order as well. 161123, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of sign variances for sliced pizza at 1010 Oxmore Road, brought to us by J.J. Thomas, Candace Watson, and Wyatt Pugh. And another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, met last week and heard from Mr. Haas and the owner of the restaurant, J.J. Thomas. The committee voted 5 to 0 to refer this item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. The motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Ms. Andrus.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this one. And Mr. Haas, if you'll tell us about this one.
Okay. This variance pertains to the, to the projecting sign for this particular restaurant. The sign is a little bit bigger than what the ordinance allows, and the, the main part is, the, the text is bigger. It's allowed eight inches, and that is 22 and a quarter inches, but the sign does fall in line with similar businesses in that Edgewood area.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I'll close the public hearing, ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion from Ms. Smith and a second from Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 23185. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, we'll go back and do 141123, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a sign variance at 2800 Highway 280, brought to us by Bricktops Restaurant, Diane Foley of Scott Services and Wyatt Pugh. And another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, we met last week and heard from their representative, and the committee voted 5 to 0 to refer this item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Mr. Sims and seconded by Councillor Gear. Gear, sorry.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this one. I think we've got a representative from.
Scott Services.
Scott Services. If you will, just to explain your sign variance request.
Right there, that logo is bigger than what's, what's allowed. The customer had that at a previous location and wants to take it from that location and install it over here.
All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not, then I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Pugh, if I remember correctly, the wall, the fact, the sign itself is allowed. This is just a sign variance?
That's correct.
A size variance, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council?
And I can't remember. I, I think it's illuminated, right?
Yes, it is illuminated.
Yes, so that you can see it from 280 at night?
Yes. It's actually backlit.
Backlit, yeah.
It's not frontlit. The wall shines up.
Okay, gotcha.
Can, can, I want to make sure I'm not on that committee, but what we're really approving is the guy holding them.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
That's not somebody there, so that's.
It's hard to see from that picture, but, okay.
Yes, that's, that's.
It's not in the lawyer's office.
So, so that's, that was my question. Don't come in for asking this, President Wyatt, but that's not a mural?
It, so, it's, it's part of their logo, I believe.
It is part of their, okay. Okay.
That's what, that's the distinction, is once you, once you're doing, yeah, once it's branded or an advertisement, then it becomes commercial, and then it becomes a sign.
And then therefore, we have to give them a variance.
Correct.
Well, I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion from Ms. Andrus, second from Mr. Sims. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 23186. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. All right. Next item, 101023, public hearing held on November 6, 2023 at 6:00 PM for consideration to rezone 1300 Columbia and Road from I-2 to C-1. The applicant is Eric Rogers of Progressive Properties, and the owner is Second Presbyterian Church to permit the construction of a 20,125 square-foot, single-story medical office building. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of 4 to 5 unfavorable recommendation. We have previously had the public hearing on this and carried it over. I see Ms. Sellers at the podium, and I think you've got an update for us.
Yes, things are progressing in a positive way, we're pleased to report. We're all, all parties are at the table and working together. As you all know, though, we, our original request is to rezone the entire parcel to C-1. Sorry, make sure that's right, C-1. So we would request, though, as part of these conversations, we may need to make some adjustments to our application, so we would need to go before the Planning Commission again. So we'd ask that you please refer us back to the Planning Commission. We'll do our best to, to make either the next, you know, next or, or February, either January or February, depending on how far along we get with the holidays.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Then we will refer this back to the Planning Commission. They'll let y'all do, finish your work, and we'll see you whenever you get back.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item, 181123, public hearing set for January 8, 2024 at 6:00 PM for consideration to approve the amended development plan at 800 Lake Shore Drive for Sanford University to permit the proposed construction of a new five-story, 515-bed freshman residence hall comprising a total of 142,737 GSP, intended to accommodate the university's ongoing student housing needs. This comes to us from Sanford and from Caleb Martin of LBYD and the Planning Commission, which had a 8 to 0 favorable recommendation. So we will carry that item over for the public hearing on January 8, which brings us to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of that agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Alamon, second for Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved 11 to 0, which brings us to other new business. First item, 091223, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign contract and pay fiscal year 2324 budget appropriations for Sims Garden, brought to us by Robert Rigg and Melody Salter. This is one of those items that's already been approved in budget. This is just about authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. So I'd entertain a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Who was the first?
You can get John. John.
Okay. Motion from Mr. Harden, second from Ms. Gear. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 23187. Last item, 101223, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of November 28, 2023 through, through December 11, 2023, brought to us by Robert Rigg and Melody Salter. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Harden. I'll yield to him.
Yes, I actually got caught up with Ms. Salter and got the answer to my questions, so I make a motion to approve the vouchers for the period of November 28, 2023 through December 11, 2023.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Harden, second from Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 23188. All right. Which brings us to the end of the agenda tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Well, needless to say, it has been a rough couple of days for a lot of people, not just in Homewood, but surrounding communities, and several people are still not in their homes, still do not have power. And it's just, it's a tragedy from Saturday night. We, I've, I've been here 46 years, almost 46. I'm not going to waste away those last two weeks of 45. Almost 46 years. And I've never seen a storm come through Homewood like, like this. So our, certainly our, our thoughts and prayers are with those families who are still affected. I have to say, thanks to the Homewood Police Department, the Homewood Fire Department, the Parks and Rec, and Streets Departments for their, I mean, their hard work leading up into today, and they're still going tonight. There's still a lot of work to be done, to be able to get all the roads cleared and, and help as many people as we There's still a lot of work to be done to be able to get all the roads cleared and, and help as many people as we possibly can. But I will say this, after leaving my house Saturday morning, excuse me, Sunday morning and driving around, Homewood is the very definition of what a community is. If you saw the amount of neighbors that were helping neighbors clear debris, cut down trees, doing the things that we do here in Homewood is, is just phenomenal. It's something that, that I just can't speak to. So, you know, to all of those people that were out there helping, it's, thank you so much. I know some of you have, have been out there as well, but there's a lot of resources. J.J. was on a VoAD call this morning. We've posted it on social media as well as our website. The Red Cross is gonna be the one that will be handling most everything. So if, if anybody has any questions or if you get phone calls, please send them to that number. You can also dial two one one for help with tree cutting services. So there are a lot of resources that are, that are out there. So if you have any, any, any calls whatsoever that come directly to you, please send them there or certainly send them to us here at the city. We're, we're, we'll be able to direct them where they need to go. Thanks to, excuse me, again, the, the fire police and the Parks and Rec for a wonderful Christmas parade last week. I thought that was, uh, just, it's always one of the best events of the year, lighting the star and, and kinda getting the holiday season kicked off. And, and again, tonight, thanks to Counselor Sims for helping make connections, again, for the lighting of the menorah, which is, is another one of our great events here in Homewood. So that's all we've got.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Qualdy?
I do not need to set public safety, so, um, mayor did a good job like marking off everything in the list I had over here. So all the things you said, well put. But to that point, I, I'm really thankful and surprised that, that the fact that no one was harmed during the storms on Saturday night. So, you know, that and our heartfelt gratitude to those individuals that work in the city. J.J., I know you didn't get mentioned, but I know you labored heavily and late and hard corralling the troops with the mayor right beside you. So thank you both for your leadership and also thanks to all the, the teams in the city that you referenced as well. Our heartfelt gratitude to them for all that they do for us, so that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Gere?
Uh, yes, just to reiterate, I had no idea that that had happened in Homewood. It did not happen in my direct neighborhood and I got out that morning and was really shocked. And I appreciate everything that all of you and the city have done to help all of our neighbors. That was a bad deal that went through town, so, uh, thanks. And also thank you to the beautification board and Nick and the mayor, that menorah lighting is really special and very much appreciated by our Jewish friends in the community. And also, lastly, Amy at Sims Garden wants me to let everyone know that there are a few spots left with Santa this Saturday. And just go online and make your appointment and have your picture made, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Alamon?
Yeah, I just wanna again reiterate what everyone's saying. I think that it's an amazing community in which neighbor helps neighbor. You know, I had several texts of folks asking if we knew people who needed help and were willing to go, even people outside of the city wanting to come in and, and provide assistance. So we're grateful to all our neighbors and friends and again, thank you to the leadership of J.J. and Patrick, I mean, the mayor. It doesn't go without notice how much you all pour into this community and making it feel like home always, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walton?
Um, I saw one item for Public Works. Do we know what time we're? Right, okay, I'm assuming my item's pretty, pretty?
Do you want, how long do you think you're gonna be since we're doing both? Okay, so we should have time after?
Okay.
After? You've got one item?
About five twenty. Mine'll be pretty quick, I think.
Right, I'll have to set mine too.
Someone probably needs to go at four thirty, but I don't mind. Okay, all right, we'll do finance at four thirty.
Okay.
And then you wanna be after finance?
Sounds good.
Okay?
Yes, um, yeah, so, um, I, I guess I'll give a quick shout-out to everybody in the, and, sorry. There's been a lot going on the last couple of days. Just wanna thank Parks and Rec for putting on the parade last week, which kind of accentuates another part of the community coming together and celebrating and enjoying the season and enjoying each other. And, um, I, obviously, I won't belabor the point, but the storms were kind of another sense of coming together and, and working together to try and kinda get back, you know, get your heads above water. And I know, just, you know, wanted to thank everybody else for reaching out, 'cause there was a thread amongst all of us asking how everybody was doing across town. I wanna thank Nick for helping come out along with several other neighbors, but Nick's the only one up here tonight. But several people came over and helped cut up sections of tree that were on our roofline and helped take those to curb and throw those off and kinda get things tarped and kinda squared away. So hopefully if any more rain comes through, we, we don't have any further damage. And then obviously, I mean, those companies are making money, but thank you to the, the tree service guys that were out there and prompt and doing as much as they could, as quickly as they could. And, and in many cases, that included, in, at least from my experience, not just coming for the job they were coming to do, but they, I watched a couple crews cut up all the crap that was in the road and quickly move it out, you know, out of the way and, and help, um, help the, the police and fire department kind of get, gain access to places they didn't have as well. And then we had a fire, fire department call, two houses up from us where somebody decided to try and light a fire and didn't realize their, their chimney had actually been damaged from the fire, or from the storm yesterday. And so quickly there was a blaze up in their chimney and so the fire department was back out there. And so it was just, uh, it was just never-ending and, and obviously, we can all kind of keep track of dispatch logs, but it's, they, they've been running non-stop. So, um, really appreciate their, their hard work and effort and all of that, um, and just the coordination. And then, uh, lastly, I, I would just covet your prayers for my grandfather, who last night went into the hospital in, in the ICU tonight. Had a procedure this morning. And they've still got him sedated, he's still on ventilator, he's, you know, he's elderly. But just kind of battling off some infection stuff and, um, obviously that's, this is not the best season for that either, but just pray for him and my family, thanks.
We will absolutely do so. Mr. Sims?
Thanks, um, I really just wanna echo what everyone else said. I wanna thank the mayor and the entire city staff, police, fire, Public Works, everyone, you know, who came out and led the way, you know, thanks to all the helpers. And thank you, Lord, for keeping everybody safe, amen.
Mr. Jones?
Uh, finance at four thirty and I'm sorry I missed the parade, I heard it was great. So thank you to all the people, Bo, everybody who, who worked so hard to, to, to get that accomplished. And, um, you know, over the years, every time there's been a storm throughout the region, Homewood has always stepped up and sent, you know, a contention of, of people who, who would help. And I'm sure, Mayor, you've gotten multiple calls of people wanting to come help us. And, and that's really says a lot about, about what we believe and we've really never had an EF1 come through. So it's so nice to have people think about us when we've helped them over the years, you know. So anyway, just wanna say prayers are out to everybody on that and, uh, and that's all I have tonight.
All right, Ms. Smith?
Um, I'll set special issues to follow, Public Works, and I should only just have one item because the Homewood Athletic Foundation item we're gonna carry over, 'cause Aaron is not gonna be in town next week. And then we're having the Historic Preservation Commission meeting tomorrow night here at seven on the fourth floor. And, um, you know, it's, um, my neighborhood was one of the neighborhoods that was directly affected by the storm. There was a lot of damage on my old street, Crest Lane. In fact, the house, my former house, had a tree on the roof as did about five other houses on the street, including Meredith Drennen's, the chamber director. So it was a bit of a mess. The street was, our street, Crest Drive, was blocked on both, on both ways. You literally couldn't get to us. And when the city, when the guys showed up, when Berkeley's guys showed up, it was like the cavalry had arrived and they had been working since two A.M. On like no anything, J.J. and Berkeley had brought them biscuits, which they told me were a little dry, but you know. He said, if you told Berkeley, tell them those biscuits are a little dry. So I was like, I had no way to give them anything. I was like, I have water and Gatorade, he was like, we'll take it. So I was like, yours. But they made like, they took, they cleared the road in like no time flat, they were so sweet. He was telling me that they appreciated us and I'm like, are you kidding me? We appreciate y'all. But it was just, and, and like Patrick said, people were out, people were helping Meredith get stuff out of her house and trying to salvage stuff. And, and everybody was helping everybody like get limbs up and cleaning, cleaning everything. And Gary Owen and his son Garrett rode to the, my rescue and brought their chainsaws and started cutting trees in our backyard. So it was, everybody, it was just, it really made me feel very proud. And, and like everyone said, the fact that this happened in the middle of the night and we had no serious injuries and, and no loss of life is just absolutely miraculous. And, and I'm so thankful for that, so, and that is all.
All right, Ms. Nels?
I don't have anything tonight, but just grateful for all of that.
Ms. Andrews?
Um, I will set PND to follow special issues and I just wanna mention, um, we're talking about affected areas of town. The Shays Creek Parkway folks, I mean, I, I texted these guys this morning on the way to work. I usually come down Devon and turn left and I couldn't get really down Devon. The Bald's house had been hit by a tree. I turned left not realizing it was blocked there and every single house had a tree on it. Winslow Armstead, who's on the planning commission, they lost three cars and, um, and two trees on the house and three cars. I mean, it's just, I, I couldn't, I texted these guys, I was like, this is what, how many hours later? And I'm still shocked by what I was seeing, I just absolutely could not believe it. So, um, anyway, and I, a friend of mine just texted me about an hour ago, she was trying to go for a run on the Lake Shore Trail. And she said that, um, the intersection's still down, so they're still blocked at two eighty and Lake Shore Parkway, so just don't go that, don't go that way, so.
And there's no traffic lights, no lights.
Correct, and she said, and she said people are full of rage. She said, I said, well, that's on the county. I said, if I can blame anybody, I'm gonna blame out on the county, that's not on us. And anyway, we, we got our power back last night about eleven o'clock and I came home from having dinner at a friend's house and our street was, I mean, pitch black dark. I mean, I know it's the same as yours is right now, but I couldn't believe how dark it was. It was just, it just was nothing like it, so. Anyway, love y'all and just, you know, praying for everybody and just so blessed that nobody was hurt, really, really blessed that nobody was hurt, so that's it.
Mr. Harden?
All right, I have War and Peace here, I'm gonna go through. I did, you know, we were without power for basically twenty-four hours and, and you really realize how important the power company is. And the, the guys finally showed up in our backyard about, I don't know, about nine thirty. And I thought, okay, if they're here, they're focused on it, 'cause every other street around us had power, except ours for whatever reason. And she said there was somebody on our street still at six thirty tonight still didn't have power. So that power, it, I mean, you go into a different mode when you have no power. You're doing all kinds of stuff to make sure, you know, that once it gets dark, it changes everything. But we, we, we really, I mean, we have a big dead tree in the house behind us. And I have asked him and asked him to get it down. And, I mean, somehow that, I mean, it is a massive fifty-foot tall tree. And I don't know how it didn't, 'cause one branch has already hit our house. And I don't know how it didn't come down, but anyway, um, uh, what, what I saw when I went through the neighborhoods is a lot of the trees that went down were dead. You could tell they had, the inside of them was hollow and, and, but anyway, uh, we all, it all came out well for us considering that nobody got really hurt. I, I heard, I think Barry, didn't you say one, one child was trapped in his room?
Yeah, the fire, the fire department came and rescued him, because the tree that fell on their house fell onto his, his bedroom, but he was, but he was okay. No, that was the gas, they, they were okay too.
So anyway.
They did have to rescue, but he was, he was okay.
But I always know when these things happen, J.J.'s there to res, to the rescue, okay? So, thank you, J.J.
All right, thank you, everybody. I, I won't belabor the point other than to just say also how grateful I am that no one got hurt. Unfortunately, this is the second one of these that I've lived through. And both times, one, one was not in Homewood, one was when I was a kid. You see, you see what your community is about and your neighbors are about and, and how everyone chips in and helps. And it's, it's really a wonderful thing and, and I just appreciate how all our, how all our residents reacted to this and, and are continuing to react to it. And appreciate more than we will ever be able to show them what all the city employees that are, how they're operating, the work that they're doing, continuing to do. Mayor and J.J., we appreciate everything you're doing. Your leadership is invaluable at a time like this. And, and it, you know, you make it look easy, but it's not. And so we, we very much appreciate that and hope that everyone continues to stay safe because obviously not everything is done yet. And, and certainly, you know, hope that everyone will be patient. As, as our guys continue to work, there's a lot to be done and it just takes time to get through it. They're still working to clean streets. And so, and, and some garbage got delayed because it takes longer to get through streets and, you know, things like that are gonna happen and, and just would implore our residents to, to keep the spirit that they've shown over the weekend and, and, you know, stay patient and helpful to everyone. And, uh, you know, certainly to at least a couple of you up here that have a lot of damage to your house, you know, we're thinking about you and, and we'll do anything that y'all need, obviously, along with the rest of our, our residents. So with that, we will be adjourned and we'll see everyone next week.